And a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. McErvin?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni? Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the opposite council member be excused?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that Councilmember Pavoni be excused. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. Vanessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Let me open my PowerPoint here. For the record, Vanessa Dolby, current Planning Manager with the Department of Community and Economic Development. So I'm here tonight for a public hearing to discuss basically designating one particular parcel to have a formal terminology as a public alley. The parcel we're talking about on the screen here is located up in the Highlands. It's identified in yellow. It's in between Northeast 16th Street on the north side, Jefferson Avenue northeast on the east side, bounded on south by Northeast 12th Street and the west, Index Avenue northeast. It kind of runs behind a set of homes that currently exist that are built along those street frontages. To the west, you'll see there's McKnight Middle School. And then also, if you're familiar with the old Highlands Library site on Northeast 12th, that touches the very south end of this piece of property that we're talking about this evening. A little bit about the existing conditions of this property. It is currently primarily gravel in terms of its improvement. About eighty-five percent of it is in gravel condition. About fifteen percent is unimproved, so it has some weeds or grasses growing. The width of the tract, the tract, sorry, the parcel, let me just look at, show you this again, this image. It averages between fourteen feet and eighty-eight feet. You can see in kind of the portion where it curves is the widest portion of it. And then as it narrows down, it's more around twenty feet for a long length. However, our city alley standard has a minimum width of sixteen feet, so it meets that standard or exceeds that standard for the primary length of that alley. Currently, in its current condition, there are various properties that do use this to provide vehicular access to the rear of their lots, as well as pedestrian access to and from. There is one lot along this that does use this as a primary way of access. They do not have frontage on one of the public streets that was previously mentioned. So by way of history, the piece of property that included the Highlands Library, the old Highlands Library site, was originally created as a part of a plat named Corrected Plat Number Two, or Renton Number Two, that was recorded in 1956. And this parcel was designated as a quote "public use area." Fast forward to 2016, 2017, this was in city ownership. The city did a short flat to divide off the Highlands Library site and sold that to the Renton Housing Authority. And then we kept kind of the narrow piece of that property in city ownership. In 2011, as a part of the Sunset Area Community Planned Action, we adopted, identified this particular parcel as what we called a green connection and an alley green connection. So this basically says this will be an alley and it will, or we envision this being an alley with some stormwater infrastructure features to create that quote-quote "green" aspect of it. So with all of that, staff does recommend that the council formally designate this parcel as a public alley, which would allow the city to improve the full length of that alley to meet city alley standards or current city alley standards. It would also memorialize the access for the abutting parcels that currently use the parcel for vehicular access. And then it would also allow future developments to, that abut that parcel, to use it for alley access. And just another piece of information, the city does currently gravel and grade that, our Public Works Department does. So we do maintain it currently today in a not fully city standard position, but we do maintain it for those people that do use it today. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have a question. The piece that you said about eighty feet wide, what are we gonna, or what's gonna happen to that?
So there's no engineering or design plans at this point in time. We're just looking at designated an alley. But there was a vision that was created through the sunset process to make it the area outside of the sixteen feet width that would be needed for, let's say, vehicular travel, would be used to treat stormwater or create sort of these green spaces.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I guess, I guess, once it becomes an official city alley, those people that are kind of using it just for their parking, that will go away?
Um, not, not after this designation. So under the current condition, no one's really actually parking in it. They're just driving down it and then parking on their own property in the back, for the most part. So after we formally designate this, what it will allow is that the city could potentially improve it later. For example, put the project on the CIP to be able to pave it and add the stormwater infrastructure that's needed so that people could use it in a improved condition from its current condition.
Thank you.
You bet. This is a public hearing. We have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium and give your name and city of residence for the record. Howard McComber.
I'm Howard McComber. I live in the city of Renton. I also live very close to this. I've been looking at that alley for a long time, many years. And I think it's wonderful if the city will improve it some more. It needs improving. It's necessary. It is, it has always been necessary because it forms very good access for the back of buildings on both sides. I can't think of a single negative thing with having the city improve its condition. And I'm sure that all the things having to do with alley, it's got plenty of space to do it in. And there isn't anybody encroaching on the alley as far as parking goes. So I'm just delighted that the city is considering this. We are doing a lot of wonderful things in our sunset area. We've been working, I've been involved in this for a number of years. I'm very interested and I appreciate the help that I've had from the city staff and for all the folks that are here. Our goal is to have this be just one step above any other area close by. That's our, that's our goal. And if we, if we get close to it, we're gonna just be shouting and throwing our hats in the air. But this is a great, this is a great improvement. I'm so pleased. This is just making me very happy. I've talked to some of the other people there. They feel about the same way I do. It'd be really nice to have, actually, we'd love to have it paved and lighted and a bunch of other stuff, to tell the truth, because it would be really wonderful.
Chip and Greg, can you give Howard a little, a few paragraphs on LIDs?
Ah, dear. I had better be quiet while I had. I just want you to know that I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Amir, and I, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do us both a favor. I'm not gonna ruin your last name.
Oh, Fahar's the last name. First name is Amir. Thank you, Your Honor and the council members. My family owns rental houses, apartment buildings throughout Renton. And no, we're not slum lords, but we're proud of our product and the fact that we're good citizens of the community of Renton. We met with Vanessa and Jared and Matthew up at the Renton Highlands. We own an apartment building on Jefferson Avenue northeast. We highly support this public alley. I think it's gonna be awesome, as the previous gentleman echoed. I echo his sentiments. We'd love to see it paved as well. If you take a trip up to Jefferson Avenue, you'll see it's a pretty street. You know, it's got old sidewalks that are dilapidated, curbs that are not even curbs, they're bit out of asphalt. The road is narrow, a lot of cars parked on the street. And so I think this is what's gonna happen here, is it's gonna remove a lot of these cars to the back, to the alley. And it's gonna open up that road, you know, and it's gonna be just breathtaking to design. It's two, kudos to the department for their, for their work to put together a design with new sidewalks, new curbs, new gutters, storm drainage and all that on Jefferson. And then this alley in the back, which is gonna bring a lot of cars, take a lot of vehicles to the backside. And we highly support it and we hope you will do, you know, vote in favor. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Jason, was there any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. McErvin.
Uh, move we close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Mr. Corman, that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we'll have a resolution later in the meeting.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I'd just like to thank the gentleman that spoke on, on that alley. I'm happy to hear that their, that their opinion is very much like my own. That, that location isn't very far from my own home, and I've ridden my bicycle down that, that alley before. It's actually a pretty wide, surprisingly wide alley, and it, it just could look, could look nicer. And I, I think the city investing in infrastructure in that neighborhood is always well received. And we are trying to get the, the private sector to invest more, so it's a good first step for us to do something like this. So I, I'm grateful that they've come and spoken tonight. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have one item for you this evening. I just wanted to inform the public that the Sunset Neighborhood Park is now closed for construction of the Phase Two improvements. These improvements are gonna include a new playground, a mist water feature, picnic area, adult fitness area, a pavilion, pergolas, walkways, rain gardens, and some additional open space areas. This construction is expected to be completed by June of 2020. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to audience comments, we have one person signed to address the council. Want to call your name, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes. Jason Collins?
Hey, Jason Collins, I'm living Renton. Hey, appreciate the bald spot by whatever it was that was on the hat that said, "Down with my demons." I found after they came to leave me the orange notice. And I thought, hey, maybe they were trying to say, "Take the Plymouth hat off." And I end up with getting nared or whatever. I think that's kind of how, I would assume it was Police Department. But on top of that, I'm looking at the election results, right? So I put them all, take this, the, I just wanna know who voted for what, right? Like, so I can say, hey, maybe I'm way off, like, um. Considering that all the spreadsheets you get off the King County Elections Boards, the numbers don't line up with each other. If I looked up position, I know Ryan was up for election and so was Ed Prince, right? Like, if you take the numbers of vote, people that voted for you, for your person that you're writing up, and then the write-in, you add them all up and then you subtract them from the number of people that actually voted, you can get a negative count on one of your two, I think it was, I noticed. There's a negative against the, the voted for Ed, voted for Ed's, you ran, you ran unopposed, right? So yeah, so I think it was you. And if you vote, put it against your, the two of them, you end up with a negative number against the number of people that actually, ballots they actually counted. I'm dead serious. Swear to God. Maybe they'll fix it in between now and then, but, but, so the results are way skewed. I got, I got this one, right? And I don't know, the federal, there was some federal workers in, in the library when I got it, right? So I don't know if it was like the real results, but it pins about three thousand apiece for Ruth Randy and Marcio Maxwell and Pavone, right? So I don't know who's getting what, but then there was only forty-nine write-ins, which works for me because that makes about, that makes more sense than anything else, but maybe it was the primaries. I don't know. The fact is, I, I like, am really sick of like, like I'm just sitting back here and I'm getting asked where I'm sleeping, right, by a cop. I'm so sick and getting asked where I'm sleeping by a cop. Obviously, I, I lived here for four years. I'm working for a business in town. And then that, then all of a sudden I have snipers on the roof of my neighbor's house after my employer fires me on my birthday, right? In a gated community up on Talbot Hill, all right? This is how I end up homeless. So this is your guys' fault that I'm homeless, so I come in and try to bring this up to the City Council and bring up problems and say, hey, I can fix this if you give me a chance with little to no money. They, they are not worthless people, the homeless. You can put them to work, but you have to use standards that are like Ford with, you can have any color you want as long as it's black or, and the assembly line, you cannot put them to work any other way, right? And if you have homeless, I absolutely hate looking at it. I've lived my whole life. I've been the guy that says, "Go get a job," and won't give them a dollar, all right? Now I'm right there, and I'm sitting here going, oh, it's because the Police Department blackballs you, all right? Like, don't get my fucking phone calls, and it's, it's a problem. All right, so anyway, I can't wait to find out what the end, end-all is on the election results and how many of them, like, I'm sorry, if you count fifty-five thousand ballots for Renton, then I don't know too many people that would vote only for the mayor but not for position three or five or whatever. So those numbers should line up with each other. Otherwise, I just think that you're making up numbers and, I mean, I'm sorry, but did all of the Latino community forget that they were Latino? I mean, like, how can there only be four hundred people that voted for Perez in all the write-ins? Or like, did everybody forget that, how long have you been on the council? Fourteen years or something stupid, right? I mean, like, I mean, like, how long has Bone and Marcio Maxwell's never even been on the council? So how can she have nine thousand votes for, I mean, it's just nutty.
I know it's only a misdemeanor in Washington to fuck with votes, so.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have thirteen items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item B.
I'm sorry, that was an item D?
No, B. B is in boy.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so.
You don't need a, sorry, you don't need a.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item B.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Mr. Corman, that council approve the consent agenda minus item B. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to be able to give special recognition to your appointment of, excuse me, Kara Murphy Richards to the newly created municipal court judge. With that, I move the item B be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that item B be adopted by council. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Kara, could you stand up to, come up to the podium? It's great to have the opportunity to tell a judge where to stand.
And to call you, Your Honor, Your Honor.
Kara, I just want, I just wanted to let the public know that we, tell them a little bit about you and then I'll let you say a few things about yourself. But it's, this is the first opportunity I've had in my twelve years to be able to appoint another municipal court judge to serve Renton. And we're very pleased that we have you as our, our second municipal court judge. Kara received her Juris Doctorate degree from the University of Notre Dame Law School in 1995. She worked previously as a prosecutor for twenty-six years in a number of different jurisdictions. King County, Kent, Black Diamond, name a few. Since 2009, she has filled in as a Judge Pro Tem for multiple jurisdictions and has pro tem steadily for our court downstairs. She's a well-known Judge Pro Tem at Renton Municipal Court, for sure. She's worked as a domestic violence legal advocate for many years and has a long history of social work. Kara volunteers many hours in the community and served on the executive boards of Athletes for Kids, as well as Mary's Place. She's excited. She told me she's excited for this opportunity to be part of the city's community court and has something that she's aspired to be for some time. And of course, she's a member of the Washington State Bar Association. So I just wanna congratulate you and give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison told me I might have a chance to say a few words. So I'm gonna start by telling you that on the way here, my two sons, who are kind of pranksters. My daughter is a sophomore at Notre Dame now, which is why I'll be working for many years. But both of my boys, I won't say which one, said in the car, "We were gonna call the City Council ahead of time and ask them all to vote no," as a joke.
They did.
I thought that's really funny. And then all of a sudden, I'm sitting there and somebody says, "Mayor, I, I vote to remove item B from the agenda." And I grabbed Bonnie's leg and I said, "What's happening?" So I thought, okay, and she said, "You're fine." I, I have been pro-timing for many, many years, and when I very first came to Renton, I, I thought that the presiding judge, who I adore, might be retiring soon. So I've just waited every year, hoping for the opportunity to seek his appointment if he ever left. And many times telling Ms. Woodrow and other members of the court that I really wish we had a community court because we know it works. And other courts, Seattle's used it for years. We've talked about doing it way before King County ever had it. And every time there's been an opportunity in King County for an appointment, I've always said, "I'm holding out for Renton." And they just kind of chuckle and say, "Why are you holding out for Renton?" I said, "You have to work there to understand it." But it's a very different kind of team than I work for in King County. And so I will also share, not that I was overly confident, but I was prepared to spend the rest of my years in Renton. I am now a homeowner in the Laurelhurst area, have already bought my house, so no matter how things went, I was already planning to move to this community. So after twenty-three years on this mammoth plateau, we do wanna be ahead of the curve. So we will be living in Laurelhurst as of December 12th. And I'm just really, really excited for the opportunity to serve the community and very thankful my two boys came to support me. My husband is a head of produce for Costco. He don't have a Costco. He used to have the devil of Costco next door to you, which I wasn't allowed to shop at, but he texts me from the plane many times going, "Should I get off the plane? Should I get off the plane and come with you?" I'm like, "No, it's all good." And then, so he just wanted me to know he was proud. So I'm feeling really proud and really excited for the opportunity and really so thankful that you trusted me with this. So, thank you very much.
You bet. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And it sounds like my boys can come up and take a quick picture?
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna interrupt the meeting. I'm gonna cause you to disruption, so where we, okay.
Beck, let's, let's set it up. We'll get the council and.
Can you just kind of go right here so we could get the.
Oh, here, there you go. Nice to see you. I've been working on this as I couldn't from the road. Mr. Person's nice to see you. We have mutual friends on the island. Thank you.
All right.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just, there's a one person in the audience that is really responsible for the wonderful teamwork of the court, and that's Bonnie Woodrow. Bonnie saw you back there and I just couldn't let it go. Thank you.
Very true. I'm sorry Bonnie's all way in the back. I don't think they have a picture of her. We'll have to do that.
You wanna come up front for a picture?
I think you've embarrassed her enough. Thanks, Bonnie. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
Uh, no unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. McErvin?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee has one committee report and then one other item.
Okay. Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report ordinance for setting speed limit on non-arterial residential neighborhood streets to twenty miles per hour. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation that council adopt an ordinance which authorizes changing the speed limit from twenty-five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour on non-arterial residential neighborhood streets on a case-by-case basis and establishes a procedure for the city to evaluate and decide upon request to reduce the street speed limits. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading and subsequent adoption. Signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
Uh, it was actually even just this weekend I spoke to a resident in the Highlands that was, was begging us to do something about the speeders on their streets. So we now have this great tool, which we're putting into place, that hopefully them and other neighborhoods will be able to take advantage of. So I'd like to move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then the second item was the committee report we had that we did not sign, and I would like to explain why. And that was because it was on the public hearing that we had tonight. So we thought it was improper to do that out of order and approve this and then listen to everyone and saying we've already decided to do so. So since Jason's got enough reading to do tonight, I'll give it a crack if you're all right with that. Does that?
Sure.
Uh, so I'd like to move that the council concur in the staff recommendation to designate the public use area on Lot Two of Renton Land Use Action, L U A one six dash zero zero nine six zero, parcel seven two two seven eight zero two four one, to a public alley and further recommend that a resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, seconded by Mr. Corman, that whatever Ryan just read is approved by the council. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I'll need a copy of that.
I think we both do. Okay, Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee on Committees Committee has a report to present.
Okay, Committee on Committees Committee Report. The Committee on Committees recommends the following council committee assignments for 2020. Finance Committee, which meets second and fourth Mondays at four P M. Ed Prince Chair, Kim Con Van Vice Chair, Council Position Three Member. Public Safety, third Monday, four thirty P M. Council Position Two Chair, Council Position Three Vice Chair, Randy Corman Member. Community Services meets the first Monday at five P M. Kim Con Van Chair, Ed Prince Vice Chair, Council Position Two Member. Utilities Committee, third Monday, five P M. Council Position Three Chair, Council Position Two Vice Chair, Ryan McErvin Member. Planning and Development Committee, second and fourth Mondays at five P M. Randy Corman Chair, Ryan McErvin Vice Chair, Ed Prince Member. And finally, Transportation Committee, first and third Mondays, five thirty P M. Ryan McErvin Chair, Randy Corman Vice Chair, and Kim Con Van Member. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
Um, I, I want to explain a little bit how this process went and also why we have Council Position Number Two and Council Position Number Three without names. And it's basically because the election has not been certified. And even though Councilmember-elect Kim Con Van also, that election has not been certified, it's impossible for the candidate that run against her to catch up with her. So basically, we know that she is gonna be the, the person that is gonna be filling for that position. Council Position Number Three, we are waiting for Tuesday, twenty-sixth, to know who's gonna be. That's the reason why we didn't have a name. And Council Position Number Two is the, is the position that is currently held by Councilmember Armando Pavone, who had, who also Tuesday is gonna be certified as, as a mayor-elect. So that's the reason why we leave those without a name. This is the way that this process was conducted. We first sent an email to all the council members to ask them what are their preferences, what are the committees that they wanted to serve. Then I make a phone call to all the council members to make sure that I understood clearly what were their priorities and how was their feeling about being in certain committees instead of other committees. This represented a challenge this year, just because the president will not be a member of any of the committees. So three council members that have already experience are gonna be part of this process, but also we have three brand-new council members. So to be fair, and, and, and we try, we try to respect as much as possible procedure, seniority, and also the desires of the council member, but balance it at the same time to make sure that at least in every committee we will have a council member that has experience in that committee that will be able to mentor the new council members that are gonna be joining us. So if I didn't say, if any of the other members will add something, or if this is clear, I will move that the council concur with the Committee on Committees Committee Report.
You were gonna say that three times.
It has, it has been a challenge for me repeating that.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with Committee on Committees Committee Report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm sorry?
No.
No? So we have one nay.
I got it.
Okay, let's see, let's, Mr. Corman, any unfinished business?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Okay. Legislation, we got a little bit of legislation.
All right, let's get started. First one is regarding the amended fee schedule. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2019-2020 City of Renton Fee Schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Move the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Next resolution is regarding the designation of the parcel as an alley. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, formally designating that certain public use area known as King County Parcel Number Seven Two Two Seven Eight Zero Two Zero Four One as a public alley.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin?
I move that the resolution be adopted as read. I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance is for first reading regarding the speed limit lowering petition. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 10-11 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding a new Section 1011-2, providing procedures for establishing a maximum speed limit of 20 miles per hour on a case-by-case basis of residential neighborhood streets, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. McGurven, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the rest of the ordinance are for second and final reading. The first one's regarding the property tax authorization. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the dollar amount and percentage increase for the property tax to be levied for the year 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Next ordinance is establishing the property tax. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2020 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $22,012,189.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance, I'm going to just start reading them. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton Fiscal Years 2019-2020 Biennial Budget in the amount of $7,804,570, as adopted by Ordinance Number 5898 and thereafter amended by Ordinance Numbers 5924 and 5930, and adopting an amended 2019-2020 City of Renton Salary Table.
I move adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
All right, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
All ayes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the ayes have it.
Okay. In ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 5-5 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding a new Section 5-5-7, refund of license fee, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 5-6-1 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending emission tax regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, next ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing Chapter 5-7 of the Rent Municipal Code, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Remove the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending gambling tax provisions in Sections 5-8-5, 5-8-8, and 5-8-16 of the Rent Municipal Code, repealing Section 5-8-17 of the Rent Municipal Code, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 5-11 of the Rent Municipal Code, reorganizing, updating definitions, and adding administrative provisions related to utility tax regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, next, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 525-2J, section 525-8, and subsection 525-10V of the Rent Municipal Code, amending the Business and Occupation Tax Regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 526-6A and 526-6D of the Rent Municipal Code by updating regulations in accordance with the Tax Administrative Code Model Ordinance, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Aye.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Person.
I knew I was going to have to do this at least once.
No problem. Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
And Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 293, 294, 295, 296, and 297 of their Rent Municipal Code by revising park commission regulations related to function members and term, aligning park commission regulations with current practice, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 286 and 287 of the Rent Municipal Code by reordering provisions, amending the City Art Collection Regulations, repealing the 1% for arts program, establishing the municipal art fund, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, one more. This is the bill annexation. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory to the City of Renton. Bill annexation, file number 18002.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
The next ordinance up deals with the criteria for wireless facilities and staff has requested that we hold it up for one more week.
Okay, do we need an ordinance for that, Sheriff? I'm going to motion to pull the item.
It can be rescat.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jason.
All right, next up, ordinance 5951. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 4970, adding a definition of channel migration zone in 41130, and amending the definition of Environmental Review Committee, ERC, in Section 41150 of the Rent Municipal Code by amending state environmental review procedures, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it. Three more to go.
Okay, we're getting there. All right, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 43100B1B4 of the building location and orientation table in subsection 43100E1 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending design district regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4145F2, 4770M, 4780K, 4780L, 47110C, 49200B1, and 49200E31, and the definition of subdivision phased in 4780L, 47110C, 49200B1, and 49200E31, and the definition of subdivision phased in Section 41190 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending regulations related to phasing and duration of plats, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it.
All right, final one. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4460N4 and 48120D19, Sections 41110, 411190, and 411230 in Chapter 45 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending construction and demolition waste diversion regulations, including adding and amending definitions, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Great job. Thank you, Jason. Haley, did you get all of those? Because he can go over them again. Okay, moving on to new business. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Couple, about three things. First of all, it was pointed out to me recently that the salary commission, the commission on the council's salaries for salary survey, it was required, our ordinance or resolution required that we'd have one every so many years, and we've just kind of let all that slide by.